John Metz said he was always like, could be a couple minutes late.
Dog, where was he? Did you ever think about?
I have not.
Now, I feel a little bit about hurting you thought because I feel like Grayson has to be picked up by someone.
Absolutely.
Nobody else can pick him up?
Well, yes, somebody. They would not, they would not pick anybody else. That would be good.
That would not be good.
That's what I would give.
Oh, I don't see.
It's two thirty. We'll go ahead and call the Public Buildings Committee meeting order and do a roll call, please.
Rick Brewer.
Here.
Bob Edens, Keith Gibson.
Here.
Valerie Goins.
Here.
Ranga Jessie.
Here.
John Metz, Charles Thacker.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, we have five members present constituting a quorum.
Okay, thank you. Does everybody look over the agenda and see if there's anything that needed to be added to that? Do you have anything that needs... Is everybody good with the agenda? Okay, we'll get right into it. And approval of the Public Buildings Committee minutes from February the twentieth, two thousand nineteen? Does everybody look over those minutes? Lou Bichard Thacker is in.
I'm saying.
Second by Valerie. Any questions or discussions on the minutes? If not, all approved, say aye. Pose likewise, motion carries. HB Stamps Library is on the agenda.
We just like to come meet the new committee. We've been here in the past with the old committee and we've invited them to come up and see us at the library, but I don't think anybody ever came. But we just wanted to fill you in on what we know. We just completed our new signings up there. The library and senior citizens helped pay for the signs and then Taylor Rogersville helped with the lumbering, the construction, taking the signs down and putting them back up. So, that's one thing. And then we're looking at trying to improve the inside of the library with new paint and carpeting, trying to get people on board of that, but we're basically waiting on this because of this committee's decision on trying to work on the doors and the exterior of the building, so we not doing one thing and trampling over the new stuff on the inside. So, we look forward to working with you on that. We have with us today our branch manager here at Rogersville, Melissa Montgomery, and our director of Hawkins County Libraries, Yvonne Otovich. I also have pictures here of the exterior of the building for those of you that haven't been up there to see it and the condition that it's in. So, any work that, I mean, we can get done on that. We have people constantly coming in every day trying to say, how can we help fix this? We've had people offer free labor if we provide the materials, but we say we can't do anything with it because our hands are tied. So, you have to talk to the city and the county. So, we're open, I mean, we would like to work with you all, partner with you all, help in any way we can to make it because a lot of times this is the first place people come in Hawkins County to see, you know, for genealogy purposes and get a taste of the area. And it doesn't look good for us.
I apologize. I didn't get your name.
No, James Bean, sorry.
James?
Yeah, I'm chairman of the Hawkins County Trustees.
Is any of this wood, is it, is the paint just flaking up it or is any of the wood deteriorated?
A lot of it's rotted.
Yeah, that's what I thought.
We've, we've looked at it. I've been up there and, and looked at it and I've had a contractor to look at it. He's supposed to give a surprise on fixing that. I think Atlanta's top, maybe the city of Rogersville.
Actually, there, we've got two projects that we're looking at for this building that would include the library and the senior citizens area. There's two different projects. And the project that we are primarily involved in, we will be the lead on making repairs to the door, making them ADA accessible and that sort of thing. So, that's the project that we're on here primarily. We are, we are partnering with the city. We have reached an agreement that the city council has agreed to and county commission has agreed to that the city will pay sixty percent of that proposed amount, whatever we determine, and the county is to pay forty percent of either making repairs to or replacing what doors need to be replaced and also to do ADA accessible access control so that somebody comes up and pushes the button, the doors will open on both sides. So, there, there's a project going there. And I understand that you have a contractor that you are looking at that I have not received any information from, so I don't know where he is on this project.
He's having problems, he's having problems finding supplier for the opening.
I've got that.
You definitely.
I actually met with the man yesterday. He has provided me with a quote on that install for the three doors. And so, I have that information already. All I'm looking for right now is his construction. And I also need to know if he is going to be able to, because the ramp there is not ADA accessible into the library. So, that ramp will have to be taken out and replaced to meet ADA codes. So, he will need to look at that part of the project also.
Is it too steep?
It, what has, it, when you come out the door, it automatically starts at a, at a decline and it needs to come out as a platform and then start down. So, about two sections of concrete will have to come out and put back in. So, if he can just get me the construction part, I've already got the access control.
We were going to get like three people to look at it. I think Sarah, did you not get Lakeway Door?
A Lakeway Door came up and take, took a look at it. They also gave me an estimate on the insulation in the courthouse and I've not even received.
They've not gotten back?
They've not gotten back with me.
The second project that you're looking at is, is this reading room here that he's talking about. And I have had multiple conversations with the city on this and, and I think they have something worked out that may or may not include the city, I mean, the county. So, at this point, I'm not in a position to speak about that project.
Is there any question?
No, I mean, what has been said is correct to my knowledge too. Just thinking long term, we would like to see something done about the windows because they're single pane windows and they're starting to chip and paint and stuff like that. And we'd like to be good stewards of the money and we're, I think we're wasting a lot of energy with the single pane windows and trying to keep the place warm. It's, I mean, in the wintertime or heat and cool, whatever. So, at some point, I think we need to try to budget replacing the windows up there to make it a better building for everybody.
Is any other questions? Anybody have any questions?
And then looking forward, going into the new budget year, I understand that we switched the insurance. We're, the library is in charge of getting the insurance for the building, but I understand there was maybe a problem since we switched carriers. But I would welcome anybody on the board to get with us and we can reinvestigate that as far as getting new estimates and see how it come, I mean, you know, what we need to do about. The only problem is the insurance comes due in September and, you know, the budget, or we try to get the budget in by July first, but we could schedule a meeting to, you know, whoever, somebody on the committee to meet with us or we meet with them to get some estimates so we know roughly what it's going to cost going forward.
Glad. Do you have any information on that?
Yes, I do. And, and James and Yvonne and I have talked about this fairly recently. What has happened in the past is that the library pays a portion of their liability and contents insurance. The city pays a portion and the county pays a portion based on square footage. And in the past, we have, it's pretty much been about the same year after year as far as the dollar cost. And we've pretty much been able to budget that when we're doing the budget so that we can take care of it during the times that they get their premium. However, the last two or three years, their insurance costs have greatly increased. And what we are budgeting is nowhere near what their premiums are. And so, this year, they, I don't know if the value increased. I don't know if they are insuring something different, but the va, the premium amount is much more again this year. And so, what normally happens is they acquire the insurance, they pay the premium, they give us the premium amount and the calculation as to the amount that they pay, the county pays and the city pays. And then we reimburse them. However, the county nor the city has reimbursed them their premium this year simply because the premium was so much more than we have budgeted that we, we're going to have to come up with, find the monies in some place other than where the money was being taken out of in the budget because it's probably going to require a budget amendment. So, what I was hoping that we could do and what we discussed is if they could get their insurance premium amount estimated by the time that we are getting ready for our budget, then we are better prepared in our budget to pay whatever the premium is and, and to work with the city and the county, all of us together, so that we know what we're insuring and if it is the, the proper distribution and that sort of thing. So, we need to kind of work together if we're going to have to pay the premium. We need to know ahead of time what we're going to have to pay.
Do you know, did, did the insurance give you a reason why, because I know all the answers has gone up and down, but did they give you some reason why it was so much more or?
No. We, the past several years, we've been with Nationwide. And then we were told that they were going to increase like forty percent and so we looked around. And then we decided to go with a different carrier this time, but we're, we're open to whatever. I mean, we can go back with Nationwide, we can go with whoever, and that's why I'm saying we'd be happy to meet with, you know, every, I mean, partner to here and we get three or four or five estimates, whatever we need to do. And, you know, try to determine, you know, for budget time anyway, what it's going to be to help everybody out. We're not trying to hide anything.
Is there any in claims filed?
No, not to my knowledge.
So, that's the only property that's under your care as far as insurance gets, right?
Well, yeah, we were just told, I mean, that's the way it's always been that the library orders it and it covers the library, the senior center, and nine-one-one.
It, it covers, Mr. Chairman, I mean, Mr. Metz, it covers that entire building plus the carriage house. And of course, they, they have contents for the library. The county carries the contents for, and liability for the senior center and we pay the contents for the carriage house. So, all of that is with a different carrier. What we pay for comes out of our insurance. And what their premium amount is for is for the building and their liability and contents just for the library. But they do provide the insurance for our liability for the entire building.
What's the carriage house?
It's, it's the, the back part out there. There's a little, it, it just looks like the storage building right now. But when the kenneth house was operating and they had horse and buggy, there was a carriage house there that they stored their, their horse and their buggy or their carriage.
Excuse me, that wouldn't include the kenneth house in the insurance?
No, the kenneth house life insurance is completely different and we provide, we contract with somebody to do the insurance there and then of course, we share the premium with, with the city of Rogersville. So, we do that ourself. It is not included in what he does.
Just out of curiosity, I mean, what's the dollar figure that went up from one year to the next?
What was the question?
What was the dollar figure that went up from one year to the next?
Four thousand dollars for the total policy. For, for that building, it was, it was about three, thirty-five hundred dollars.
Thirty-five hundred more.
Is there any reason why we can't put it under the Kellman's policy and then go and reimburse their portion and see reimbursement?
Since we don't own the building per se, I'm not sure that we can insure it. I think that one time before we tried that and because it's not dedicated to us, it doesn't belong to the county.
But we could do some type of lease agreement to get that factored in. Because we've got an economy of scale building that we could take advantage of and save a tremendous amount of money.
We, we can certainly check.
You, you, you're in real estate. You know, that's crazy.
Right.
That is crazy. That is so crazy.
I'll be glad to investigate to see if we can do that through our, our policy. We'll check on it and see.
Is there any other questions?
That, this, you're talking about insurance here doesn't cover anything in Churchill, does it?
No, sir.
Does that fall under Churchill? Do they take care of that?
Yeah, the librarian Churchill, see, Churchill takes care of that.
Yeah.
The only property, the only building that we insure is HB stamps. We have liability coverage for all of the facilities, but it's, in, in our, in our insurance policy, it's broken down by facility and square footage and everything. So, those are applied to the, the operating expenses for each of those buildings. So, it's separate.
Has anybody got any quotes on the, the, other than the door, on the exterior of the building?
We just have people go up there. We've not had any, nobody's got back with firm price or a quote on anything, to, to me anyway. Have you got any quotes at all, Alana, on it?
The only quote that I have are, is for the access control and de-cap accessibility to get in and out of the building. We're waiting on your contractor or some contractor to let us know about the other. So, this room right here is not, we're not in a position to discuss that right now.
Is any other questions about the library?
I just have one question. So, we need to make sure that we don't draw off the ball on this. So, is there a way that we can say that we're going to pick this back up next meeting?
Well, it's, everything's in the process.
It's in the process now. I, I would look at. We'll, we'll put on our capital projects, we'll put that on our capital projects as far as replacement windows. That has to go on a capital project because it is more than just maintenance, okay? So, that'll have to be added to our capital projects list that you already have a copy of. The insurance, we will, we'll contact our insurance company and ask them. And then we'll report that back to you as soon as we hear. It'll be at the next meeting or the next, whenever we hear.
So, all the cosmetic repairs and then that's what the, you've got the estimate on, correct?
Basically, I, I told him to look at that while he's up there, but Lana had some, she was working on something different. But basically, what he's looking at is the doors, making them ADA compliant.
Honestly, when I looked at that today, I felt like that there were some things that were just mold and mildew and possibly a good whitewashing would take care of some of the things.
There's some rock.
Well, yeah, but there's some dirt.
Especially on the soffit and the.
You know.
Right.
There's a few.
Laser boards, rock.
Cosmetic things.
Good wash, good paint.
Anything else?
Thank you all. Thank you all.
Thank you all for being here. Next item on the agenda is proposal for wastewater treatment plant at the justice center. And we have Mr. Joe Parrot here to, you all asked last month about if there was anything else that we could do. And Joe's drawn a set of plans that.
Possibly.
Possibly that might work.
If you'll, by staying.
Can you sit there so we can pick you up on that?
You asked last month Valerie if it was, and actually we were trying to do something and we didn't want to incur no more.
Right. So, Joe has picked this up.
We've asked Joe to, to look at this and this is what he's come up with.
Okay, what I've got right here, this large drum, what you're looking at is just, it's an interceptor screen. And in order for this to work, I've got to have, we've got to have a sewer coming out of the building at a high elevation. And then we go into this sloped screen over here that traps all the stuff that the prisoners apparently have been cramming in their sewer system. It catches it on the slopes, on this sloped grate right here. At a certain point in time, you get, when you've accumulated a certain amount of this garbage or whatever it is, you come in with a rake system, a sanitary sewer rake, and bring it up to the horizontal stream. You let it drain out. And then I've talked to a fellow who owns a company called American Environmental Base out of Kingsport. And he said that he can take care of that and, and vacuum it out. And then this is a covered system. It has rectangular manhole sections to cover it open. But to get this to work, I've got to have some difference in elevation somewhere in this system. My understanding, that system in some places is pretty deep, but I don't know how deep it is coming out of the building. So, we've got to find a location to where it will fit. If you'll look here, just talking on here on the first page, I've got an estimated cost. Now, this is just ballpark numbers. Initial estimated cost, minimum twenty-five thousand, maximum of ninety thousand, depending on the grade. What we have to put in, and then that's A and B, it's C right there. We may have to put a bypass system because the sewer right now is functioning. It's draining sewer, you got it in jail. And so, you've got to work with your existing system. It's already functioning. So, we may have to put a bypass sewer system in, in order to, to bypass the existing sewer, sewage flow until we can introduce the sewage into this screening system. That could cost up an additional twenty-five thousand dollars. Now, out of D, one D, design engineering construction supervision would be approximately ten percent, seven, seven thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. And I spoke on the phone with a man, I can't think of his name now. He owns a company called American Environmental out of Kingsport. And he told me that he has a sewage vacuum pump that can vacuum that accumulated garbage out of there. And he charges a hundred and thirty dollars an hour. So, we estimated one hour to get down here from Kingsport, one hour to clean it out and one hour to return for approximately about three hundred and ninety dollars per trip.
How often would that be on a per call basis or?
It'd be per call basis because you don't know, they may never throw anything in there again. They may, you know, they may toss it in there once a week. You never can tell. And I was also asked about, on page two, second page, by Sarah, to come up with an estimated cost of a competitive system that came up with, from Vona Mountain. It's a grinder system. It's called a muffin monster. And I've never seen it used before, but it, they gave me some information on there. And I went and talked to an engineer over at Holston Electric and we came up, he came up with a calculation. The, with a five horsepower motor, which is a three-point-seven-five kilowatt motor and a hundred percent efficiency running twenty-four hours a day, three-hundred-and-sixty-five days a year. He came up with an estimate in electrical bill of about thirty-six hundred dollars a year. But as these motors get older, they wear them and they draw more electrical power to maintain the same grinding efficiency. And so, at, at an efficiency of sixty-six percent, which is about two-thirds efficiency with the same electric rate of just under eleven cents an hour, I've come up with five thousand and sixty dollars a year for your electrical costs on the muffin master system. I recall what the installation cost was. I think it was even four to six hundred thousand dollars. On the third page, if you take a look at this, come off the internet. This shows a similar system. So, this is not a new idea, an untried idea. This is used years past in the thirties, forties, and fifties. This was typically what they used. They had a maintenance cleaning system. It's just a, an inclined rack there. It's cleaned out. You can see a photo there. It's a black and white photo, cleaned it out. Now, if you look on page five, very last page, I've got another photo, more recent photo, color photo, showing somebody using a rake to clean it out. And you take that sloped system, of course, the one I proposed here would be covered. It would be exposed to the, to the oval, the atmosphere. And they're raking it up on a sloped system and he's standing there and it's being deposited on that horizontal drain plate. It drains off and then they pick it up and haul it up. And I had talked to the guy, the individual from American Environmental, other than just asking what his rake was. He's got a truck system that can vacuum out this, he says it's a pretty, pretty good system. I haven't seen it. I don't know what, what it's capable of doing. I know it can pick this up. But it might be possible, if we've got, in a perfect world, if we've got a, an existing sewer up there where I've got sewage coming in at a high elevation into what's called a drop manhole, drops down and then it, and it drains out of the, the sewage pipe going out of that manhole, or I've got different elevation. It might be possible to put a small screening system inside that manhole just above that exit sewer pipe. And then if his vacuum system is capable of going down inside that sewer and picking that stuff up and getting it out of there, that way you would only need a cage or a screen inside that existing manhole. That's, it's not as easy to do as, as you, as it is to say, but it's something I think we could look at.
The, the, the only problem with that, you wouldn't have as much area for collecting.
I don't have much stuff to throw in there, so. That would be the lowest cost.
Is anybody, everybody understanding what he's talking about here?
Pretty simple. Doesn't have any moving parts.
Doesn't have any tire.
And it's about three hundred thousand or maybe dollars cheaper.
Can I make a couple of comments about that or maybe ask, ask Mr. Parrot a couple of questions if, if I might? So, if, if we look at that, we're, we're looking at three hundred dollars every time we have to vacuum that out, okay?
Yeah.
Now, we might have a month that we don't have to vacuum but once a month. Even if we vacuum one time every month, that's thirty-six hundred dollars that we need to come up with, that we'll have to budget for. I, I don't know what the maintenance is on anything that we would have to have worked on, if we would have to have a maintenance contract for any equipment that would, that would mechanically, mechanically go away or have some problems with. So, so what happens if we have to vacuum more than once a month? Because there are times that we.
You don't, that's a possibility, Alana, if we did do this. The jail's been there for twelve years. How long?
Since oh nine.
So, ever how long it's been there, we've had problems twice, I think, that inmates have stepped, stepped down. It's caused problems with the sewer system. So, I mean, to me, I know, I, I, I'll be the first to tell you, I don't know very much about when it comes to sewer problems. But common sense tells me that if we go with this pump system, we're going to be out more per electric than we are for what it's going to cost to pump to come and clean this thing out.
Now, it's, it's not a pump system. It's a grinder.
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm talking about if we go with the system you're talking about.
It's been called ten times a year.
I mean.
Four hundred dollars, it's been to four thousand dollars.
And, and this is, this is what I'm, I'm not sure about, you know, I'm not sure. I'm not sure if you call, if, if, if you've got these people on contract, uh, they ca, they come when you call, or are they gonna come like once a month to?
They, those, you'd have somebody come down and inspect it, pull a manhole look at it. And if it looks like it's up, uh, you know, if it's full of garbage, then he brings a truck down.
Is there anything, any, uh, like an alarm you could put on there to, to, if, if it starts backing up, that would, would go off to let you know that it wasn't even cleaning, Joe?
Uh, I'm not aware of anything like this. It's more something that needs, needs to be checked on, uh, maybe once every four days, once a week, maybe? Put a week's worth of garbage in, you wouldn't, as long as that, uh, as long as that pipe is high enough, where you, you've got some, if the garbage is below the pipe. Once it, once it gets up to the pipe, it starts pouring.
I don't know what, I don't know what slope that pipe's been put on, but I know when it comes under the road there, it's quite a bit of a slope going down where it goes down there, but I have no idea what kind of slope that's on.
When you, when you come out of the building, um, the first manhole is right there in the, in the driveway, do you know where that is?
Hmm, I think that may be.
It's, it's about middle ways of the building, and it is in the drive area as you go around the parking lot. That area there is probably five feet deep, probably five to, five to six. And of course, it stays pretty level until you get out to the corner where you start down the driveway, and it slopes off, and it could be as much as ten feet there. Because it slopes pretty good right there, so. That being said, um, if you, if you're gonna try to catch it before you get to that nice manhole, then you're still looking at close to eight or ten feet right there.
That'd be enough.
So all of that's gonna be underground, that'll take care of any odor control.
There would be, yeah, if it, if it did come to, uh, whatever you're talking about, they would be, it would be like a lid on it to keep the odor down.
Rectangular lids that are tight, just like the, just like a manhole lid.
Anybody else got any questions?
Yeah, the, the raking part, how often, i- is that something that has to be done daily?
Depends on how much junk they throw in.
So if they don't throw no junk in, it don't need pumping, it don't need touching, just give them operating like it's supposed to.
It's, all it is is a bunch of handle irons turning, turning stuff like this, or the three quarters, the one inch gap between them.
It's like, it's like grading, you make use, and that, it just really, what it shows right here, like a grading, you make. Well, I understand what it looks like, but I didn't know, you know, if it had to have any other attention unless there was something going on. I think you have maintenance people up there that monitor that.
We don't have maintenance people to do this.
Uh, in order to be around the stuff, you've got to have hepatitis shots and all kinds of vaccinations and such.
That's why we're gonna contract it out, we, we can't get into that part. I mean.
That's hazardous materials.
It might be possible, but I could find a manufacturer that has one of these proofed out that we just set them down. I'll look and see.
So will it handle large items like bed sheets, towels, jumpsuits?
Anything that's, uh, say, if you, well, if you put your gap, say, one inch or smaller, anything larger than that one inch, it's gonna get caught in those drainage systems. And the screens are about this, they're, 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 they'll be fabricated somewhere in the welding shop. Uh, they're about the same size, and so if one of them, if, you know, for example, if you've got a problem with their sloping screen, you could pull it out with a backhoe, put a hook on the backhoe, and then take your horizontal screen, put it back in and replace it till you, till you repair your other one, and then put your horizontal screen back in.
So you're saying the screens could be replaced? John, you got any questions?
My only concern is, jail's been there, two thousand nine, right? We've had how many instances?
Well, they're just been recent issues, we've, I think we've had three issues that we've had to deal with since.
That's accumulated over that pretty good time, so you don't know if you cut it down into smaller confined area, would that be a foul at once a week, or what?
Well, this is not gonna be confined into a smaller area.
What I'm saying is, that, the problems we've had has been accumulated over a large period of time, and it actually reared its head down here on Main Street across from, you can add grocery or whatever, back from a middle school.
Coming off that hill, you've got a sewer line with a pretty good slope, and if something clogs up, the weight of that water, the weight of the water in the sewer pushes it down through there, and it keeps pushing it downhill and downhill until it hits a flat spot right next to where the, uh, cemetery, right past the cemetery, right in there. When it goes, it's that, when the slope goes flat, there's not enough force behind it to shove that stuff out there, and that's where it clogs up at. But you, if this is big enough, you could make this, I would want to make it six feet wide, so you could, somebody had to get in there for some reason or another. You would want to, but if you had to, you'd have enough room. Six feet wide, ten feet wide, and the depth would be anywhere from six feet to ten, fourteen feet deep. Deeper it is, the more expensive it gets. And then the shallower it is, the less it holds, so, but you can make it longer.
This screen hanger, if something similar to that was put in, could it not be put in, I know it'd have a lid on it, you could open the lid and check it and all that stuff. But if it was put in, and, uh, with the lid on it and so forth, and it was checked periodically, if it started stopping up, could this screen be taken out and have another one there and put right back in, and take this and clean it?
That's why you've got these people contract to come and clean it up, Charlie, once you come and clean it out on site.
Yeah, well, no, but we have one.
What's we do, is, uh, you have, uh, there's all kinds of tools, yeah, they're not common tools, most people don't know about them, there's, there's augers and all kinds of hand tools, they used to clean those things out with. So if it, this right here is just called sewage rake, it's just a long handled heavy duty rake. You've got a slope portion, where you rake it up right here, you see where that guy stands? That's the drain plate right there, now, on that, drawing the drain plate, it's the same size as the slope screen, it's just one's horizontal, one's vertical, so you swap them out, get into. And it drains out, and then it picks it up, uh, as far as taking it out, you, you wouldn't have to take out screens unless you have a problem with corrosion or something like that. And, uh, don't make any questions again, so I can, I'm losing my train of thought here.
Well, I was curious as to why you couldn't, that screen couldn't be just pulled out, put a new one in, have a spire there all the time.
Well, you can clean it out, actually, you can pull it out. You'd have to pull it out, you'd have to have.
With that stuff you took out there.
You gotta have a chain and a backhoe to pick that thing up. Now, what you do is you rake it up, if you look at that bottom where it says section view, and it'll say, or on this drawing here, it says horizontal grate screen, but it just sits on that horizontal screen, and then, and they, they bring a truck and vacuum it out at that point right there. That, now, if, if you clogged up, if you, if you clogged up in the pipe, the, the pipe's flowing into that screen. They make augers and rakes and all kinds of hand tools to clean it, clean it out with. The, the city used hand tools to clean it out, those types of tools I've described, to clean it out down where it clogged up.
That's gonna have to be, that's gonna have to be on that slope though, like you're talking, where that doesn't happen.
I gotta have some fire, I tell you. If I'm gonna, I'm gonna bring that sewer line coming in high, where it drops down, then I've got all that vertical space to accumulate all that garbage and stuff. And then, then clog it, so the, the more vertical space you've got, and the longer that screen is to, to hold that trash, the longer you wait till you call the people to come clean it out for you.
Any other questions?
The Rogersville Sewer Department would be involved in, in this too.
We, we have agreed that we would try to work with them to be sure that whatever we installed would be compatible with their system.
This is compatible, this is just a drop, wherever it's dropped, manhole, you put this beside it to bypass it and then come in with it. You can actually bring this into the side, you know, I'm, I'm showing the plan, I'm showing them, come in, warn them, go out heavy, but I can come in outside of this thing. And make it work, of course, I know you're in, and I can come out of them. It's just we've got, I've got to find a location where I've got, where I can see it here.
Any other questions? Does everybody understand what we're talking about?
Now, one possibility, like I said, I can, I'm gonna talk to environmental people, and see, we may be able to modify an existing manhole there to, with a screen on it, a vertical, it won't hold as much.
I don't think that that's a, probably an option, that we're gonna be able to. I don't think, 'cause if we have an occasion like we've had in the past, there's gonna be so much stuff come down there that if that's all we had, it would be backing up, but you was really gonna.
I'm showing this thing coming out of the ground, in the grass area, it would be better off to put it outside the parking lot if you can, that's an if. But you could set this thing down in the parking lot, make it flush, and have him eat the grass where you can drive over.
What sounds like, what are we talking about, coming from the jail?
Thank you so much.
So everybody good with what we've discussed, I mean, I know this is something we need to think about. Thank you, Joe, okay, I can come back your next meeting.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, you know, give me time to talk to, uh, the folks at American Environmental, and see what their thoughts are. They may have run into something similar, and they have a completely different solution. It may be a lot simpler, but I haven't had time to talk to them yet.
Mr. Parrott, if, if this is a feasible option, I'd like to replace, uh, when Mr. Parrott come back, that, uh, somebody from the Sewer Department, uh, Longchamp City, be here as well.
You've, you've talked to them already, right, Joe?
They don't like.
Can you get, I'm talking to them, come back with you?
Uh, I'll ask them, uh, but right now, they're, see, they, the, the water sewer director retired, and they're in the process of hiring a new water sewer, so they don't have a director.
We have worked with a couple of people there, uh, already, when we first started this project. And even though the director is still in limbo, there are a couple of people there that are familiar with what our problems are and, and what their system does, so if, if we're gonna do that, we can invite, we know who to invite, so we can get that done.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Keep everybody wrong with next, uh, item on the agenda is a review of the latest agreement for Stanley family fire department. Stacy, who's this with you?
This is, uh, this is, uh, my former board chairman, a longtime former chief of the department. First of all, I, I want to apologize for not being able to make your last month's meeting. I don't want you thinking I neglected you, but I wasn't notified till the day before, and I had a power obligation for the sheriff that I had to tend to, so, uh, I was given ample time for this one, so glad I can make it, be here with you, try to have some question, answer some questions, and yet, uh.
You have a copy of the agreement that we, we've looked at, you have a copy of that.
I do, um, I have, uh, I, I guess what was prepared by the committee or members of the committee, the.
Mr. Eaton and I worked on this. I think we made very mild changes to it, you know, some, some naming, the, the, uh, I think the district had changed.
Well, it's in the third voting district, but, uh, the, I think the original agreement had the fifth civil district. So whatever the difference is.
Yeah, they're red districts, yeah. Does that?
It's in the third voting district, but that, that shouldn't, that's, that shouldn't make any.
Well, I guess that's what we were looking at, we were putting it in the third voting district, is what we did, and we talked about it. I read it, and all the reasons I wanted to like the old. Yeah, we made very mild changes to it.
The, uh, the building, uh, was actually renamed several years ago, there's, and the county put a plaque on the, on the building as the D L Johnson Community Building, uh, but it's in the lease, it's still as the Waterson Voting Precinct, so does it, does it still go by both? Or what was, what's the name of the building?
Well, I have no problem either way, and what was the?
I have no knowledge of that either anyway, of course, I didn't know that.
We, we, even though the plaque is there and, and it was written on, it's really not referred to as the D L Johnson Community Building. If it's, if it's discussed at any point in, in any of the meetings, it's, uh, that's our form of really, basically referred to.
If that needs to be changed, I don't see no problem with changing that.
Well, if it's easier to keep records with and keep track, it could, it could, I guess it could still, uh, maintain the plaque on the building, and it can still be referred to as a county property, as a Waterson Voting Precinct, uh, which is probably what it's more recognized for anyway. Just a few things on the lease, uh, basically, which we'll go through it here, page by page, but on the first page of it, it says that it's gonna be used for storing the fire equipment related to firefighting, uh, with the property being available for community and, and social uses. As it's been for the last thirty-four years, the communities always had access to the building. When it was, uh, when there was a key locked to the door, there was always a key hidden outside, if somebody's gonna use them, we just told them where the key is. Now it has a key pad code, if somebody's used the building, we give them the code. The county, uh, had always, uh, paid the light bill to that building since nineteen eighty-five. It started out, the county purchased that building in nineteen seventy. In nineteen eighty-five, members of the community got together, formed a charter, created a fire department. County gave them permission to use that building, they built bays on, attached to the building, and put their fire equipment in there. That was, that was long before I, I came along. The community always had access to the building. The fire department came in and, uh, redid the subflooring. At the time, they, they put in carpet, over the years, they've replaced the carpet with, uh, with different carpet, with linoleum. Most recently, it's, it's had the, the laminate flooring. Uh, the fire department has always, uh, paid the, uh, the upkeep to inside the building as far as the cleaning supplies, any damage. Uh, over the years, we have, uh, repaired the ceiling numerous times, the ceiling kept, kept falling in. Uh, one of the most recent things we did, we replaced all the light fixtures in the building with, with energy saving lights. We maintained the roof, however, on occasions, as the roof needed repairs, uh, the county has purchased the materials such as the paint, fire department has paid the labor to have it painted, we've maintained the roof, which the roof is in, in need now, either being replaced or repaired as far as, uh, painting. Heat pump, the, uh, the fire department went in half and replaced the heat pump a few years ago. According to the lease that, that I haven't seen, it says that the county was responsible for all of these, these charges, but I feel like we use it, and the community uses that building more than what you as county officials use that building for. So we didn't have a problem with paying our, our share in putting a heat pump in, in the building. We didn't have a problem paying our share of putting the new flooring down. Uh, we didn't have a problem paying, helping put the subflooring in. Uh, we've maintained the heat pump, on occasions when our money has gotten low, I, I can think of, right off the top of my head, I can think of maybe two occasions that, that the fire department has, or the, excuse me, the county mayor's office, county has paid to repair the, the heat pump. Other than that, we, we've acquired, uh, all those costs. We, uh, we put soffit on the building, birds were getting in the roof, bird, uh, bird nest, uh, straw and things of that was coming through the ceiling into the building. We have, we came in, we put up soffit, we put up guttering. On the backside of the building, we replaced all the, the rotting, uh, wood, uh, that was on the backside, we replaced that with tin, uh, because it was becoming, uh, water was getting in and was damaging the, the ceiling that we'd already replaced and repaired several times. Uh, we've done all of this, and we've worked really well with the county, and we kept that, that building open to the, to the community. And within the last year or so, we, we, most recently, when we got internet to the building, we opened a computer station to the. And within the last year or so, we, we, most recently, when we got internet to the building, we opened a computer station to the citizens. So when people need to use a computer, print something off, get on the internet, uh, they have access to that building to come and do that. Now, we have did all that, basically because you all did pay the light bill, that, that's your building, and we kept it open to the, to public. And we have, we, we maintained the building, we kept the upkeep, and we, we footed the bill for all of that, and all that the county has done for the community building is, is pay the, the light bill. Uh, with, with that being said, if we're going to lease, if we're gonna be responsible solely, we would like, where it says be available for community and social uses. We, we run a fire department there, we, we've done our part to help run the community center for the county. If it all gets put on us, we would like to use our discretion as how the building is used, cause if, if, if we're paying a hundred percent of that, then we feel like we should have the say on who uses the building.
I thought, basically, other than election day, that you all were at that discretion now, Stacy.
No, it's your all, it's a community center.
I understand that.
We, we don't have the right to turn anybody down.
The county don't, the county don't go up there and open the doors for anybody to go in there, they have to come and see you.
Right.
We don't.
Right, but we've done that because you all have provided a community center, but if you're gonna put it all on us, we would kinda like to get away from that.
I have no problem with it, I don't care, you know, I mean, I figured that the fire department is part of that community.
Well, then, this wording right here, where it says be available for community and socially uses, uses as fire department, as, as approved by fire department administration.
Do you get any problem, anybody got any problem?
Have you ever turned anybody down, community?
No, because it, it's, it's your all's building, it's, it's not ours.
Why, why would you turn people down?
Well, we have always, like I said, we put the flooring in, we, when people use the building, sometimes it's, it's left to rest. We come in, and we clean it, we keep it up, we've always done that because it's a community center provided by you all, you all have paid the light bill, so we, we kept the upkeep. If we have a hundred percent of it, uh, we kinda have a hard enough time just running the fire department. We're, we're not in the, we're not in a, uh, community center business, and, uh, we're, we're in the fire department business.
But if that happens, and he's not in the community center business, and we continue to use that as a community center, who's gonna do that? Who's gonna go up there and open the door and provide the computer and?
Well, I don't think Stacy's gonna want anybody to go up there and open the door, if I'm in, if I'm inhabiting that fire department, I'm gonna have control of who comes in there and who doesn't.
Well, what we did, the, the community center, it, it's a, it's a forty by twenty-eight. I, I was watching the last meeting online, and I, I had the commissioner say it was about the size of this room. It, it's a lot larger, it's, it's forty by twenty-eight, uh, room, and what we did is, we put locks on the doors that go to the bays, and, and several years ago, I came to the committee and got permission to build offices, uh, when it's labeled as offices, but it's, it's basically, it's stored, it has all of our computer equipment that we use, it has all the personnel files, all the medical forms, and all that, and so everything is under lock and key that belongs to us. Uh, and we have, like I said, the doors locked to the bay area, so when people use the building, we just, we just give them the code, they come in and help herself to the, to the community center part of it. But that, that's not something that we necessarily need, if you all wanna take over the community center part and put all the bills for that, we will put a separate meter in and just control our bay area and, and stay in the bays.
I don't think we need to be in the community near us. I mean, we, we, we can't have somebody stationed at work letting people in and out.
I mean.
This, this agreement.
I understand you got everything that you, you're saying that you got everything that you concerned with under lock and key, where nobody could get to it.
Correct.
But at the same time, that is still, to get from one bay to the other, you gotta go through there, so you guys got.
Well, no, we can have access to the, we, we can.
I know you can be outside, but, you know.
How many times a year is it used as a community center other than the vote?
Oh, people use it throughout the month all the time. Right now, the biggest thing getting used is the internet station, but it's, it, it's used, well, there's times it'll be two times a month, but on average, I would say on average, if somebody has it once a month, doing some kind of shower function or, or something. I mean, it's, it's open to anybody, and that, that's the way we've always treated it, but if you're giving us a lease agreement that we have control of the whole building, then I would kinda like to have a little more control of the building, cause the way this lease agreement says, it says that I still have to do that. When, when we're in, we're in the fire department, uh, business, that's what we do.
Oh. Stacy, this is the, uh, old agreement from eighty-five. And, uh, it, it reads pretty much the same way this, what you all put together, it reads basically the same way. It does say here, in the old agreement from ninety-five, or eighty-five, leasees shall further be responsible for all utilities and nothing expenses on said premises. That's the old one from eighty-five. What it is, the county, for some reason, from eighty-five on, had just paid the light bill. But in the agreement.
If, if anybody can answer why that, it could, it could be any person any better than you, cause you were on the charter that got the department started, and you got the building going, and you were a commissioner at the time.
But I wasn't responsible for seeing that the light bill was, who we paid the light bill on, if somebody, this on.
And the, like, the former chief and myself, we, we spent a lot of money on this building, cause we were, had been under the impression that this was a ninety-nine-year lease that was put into place back in eighty-five. Can you, is that, is that when you were the, cause you came in in eighty-five also, and is that the way that you remember it?
That's the way I remember it. Uh, I understand, well, Hubert Neal was the one that signed the original.
Hubert Neal was the first chief.
Who's the first chief.
Basically, under my time as chief, I probably wouldn't have put as much money into that building, of, of, of money, the fire department's into that building, if, if I had known there was a chance that after five years we could be kicked out, and our money would be gone.
Well, I'll be honest with you, when the original resolution, I was, I was almost positive that it said ninety-nine year for a li, for a dollar.
So that, that's what we operate on.
Yeah, that's what we always assumed it was, but now this lease says five years.
Stacy, this is where I'm at, cause that's not my district, but it is part of the county. And, you know, far as I'm concerned, I'd be willing to give you all of that building, as long as we had voting rights up there. Now, I don't know what the rest of this committee thinks, or what the rest of the county commission thinks.
I know, you know, the fire department would feel more safe in spending its donated funds, its county contribution, on a building that they knew that they would have.
The only thing, the only thing is, is we have no other place to hold elections. You know, elections, we would have to have a place to hold, you know, that's the only.
We, we have no issue with, with the elections.
But now, I can say, that's my opinion, and my opinion only, I don't know what the rest of these guys, or, or, even full county commission, they would have to go for a full county commission. But I mean, I have no problem with that, because, because, uh, we've got properties now, and we've talked a little bit about them, some other properties, that we're spending a lot of money on that the, the taxpayers getting no use whatsoever out of them. And that's the only thing that, that, we've got to look at, it's the taxpayers, because you said on county commission, you know what, what we have to do about our tax, you know, how, how we have to watch our money.
And if, you know, if you, if, if the building was given to the fire department under the stipulations that if it ever ceased to become a fire department, it could revert back to the county.
Be the way that it be.
We would feel more safe with spending our money to upkeep the building and maintain it as versus a five-year deal. Uh, because we're a little weary about spending our money, if we don't know in five years, we might have to go somewhere else. So it's, it's gonna be hard, cause it's hard enough for us to get a dollar as it is to, to operate. But with that being said, we, there would be no problem with keeping it open for the, at no charge for the, uh, elections.
Well, this, the old agreement states that it be renewed every five years. It just never was done.
Just by, just be done and written, and be on file.
Yeah, I mean, the old agreement states that, now, I'm like you, I thought.
It's automatically renewed as every five years, just by the, by signature, that's the way the old agreement states it.
And that's, the new, the same thing the new one says.
Makes very mind, I've written on it.
But I don't know. The only cost, the only extra cost we would incur is if you, if you give the building, if you give the building to us, would, would basically just be the power bill, because we already carry, the building is, is already double insured. BFIS, our insurance company, has, uh, coverage on the, eighty thousand dollar coverage on the building, and then we have our liability for injury on property. Uh, however, it's still, the building is still covered under the county's insurance policy, only one policy is gonna pay off if something happens. Uh, but, but the building is, is insured, and there was, I heard a comment made at, at the last meeting, that if somebody wants to get hurt up there now, without being in contract, that county could be liable, well, I guess everybody could be liable for anything, but we do have, we are, we do have our insurance, we are insured through BFIS for our liability.
The county would be the one to be liable, because it is a county building.
Well.
And there, there is no lease presently on it.
Right, but we are, there may not be an active lease, but we are actively covered by liability insurance.
But the county's insurance would be the ones that have to pay it.
Mr. Chairman. I'm making motion that, uh, it doesn't have a number, but on the first page of the new lease agreement says the terms of this agreement shall be a period of five-year beginning, whatever they've put in. Uh, I'd like to amend this lease agreement, and to, or to say the term of this agreement shall be a period of ninety-nine year.
I don't think, I mean, we'll, we'll entertain that motion, but I don't think that that's what we need to do, we'd be better off giving it away, if we're gonna entertain a ninety-nine year lease, because.
I work on that.
But the, you know, the majority, as long as it's a county building, we are gonna have to insure it.
Don't necessarily put it in there that the lessor is responsible for.
It's, it's insurance.
But we'll still be.
Well, it's in the contract, it's liability insurance, but we actually have both, we have.
Would it be okay, y'all?
It would be okay, but I wouldn't suggest that it give Mr. Phillips for a final, for.
Yeah, that's.
If that's okay with them, which it sounds, to me, it sounds to me like you're okay with it being a ninety-nine year lease, you cover utilities and the, uh, liability, property liability insurance and.
The county would not be liable for anything, in what you get, get all the elections up there, that's what.
They just have to provide proof of insurance to the mayor's office, and you're good to go.
Is there a second on that motion?
I'll say.
Now, that is in, with the provision that the election commission has told their elections are. And I reckon that's in this lease agreement right here.
What about, is there any discussion?
What about if it, if in that lease, the ninety-nine years, if they cease to be in a fire department, that it would still.
Back to the county.
Okay.
And I think that's in your also in.
I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think it is.
I'm ready.
You're good, right, anybody got any questions, other questions?
I would like for somebody to state that entire motion for me, if you don't mind.
To change it to a ninety-nine year lease.
Lessor responsible for utilities and liability insurance, providing proof of insurance to the mayor's office.
I think that you said at no cost to the county, right?
Yeah, they, they're covering utilities and liability insurance, he's agreed to that. And it says in here that, that six-month notice, they can opt out of this agreement, if we're, so you're concerned about going back to county.
That's what I was looking for here.
It's on the last page, I think, next to the last page.
I was looking also where it talks about, mentioned the, uh, you have this copy, please.
The new copy?
Yes.
About the election commission.
Uh, yeah, I know it says they have, uh, they, you, you can put that in there, that the building can be used for any election at no charge, because it is a county building, and we're not, uh, now, the, the election commission has sent us a fifty-dollar check each one for us claiming it and putting, cause they, they use our stuff, our tables, our chairs. We've not asked for any of them, but they, they have sent us a fifty-dollar custodian, uh, check for the, uh, the housekeeping.
You do understand, though, that if there's, something went wrong that, uh, well, uh, say they had a drinking party, for an example, I'll just use that for an example, that lease agreement could be terminated.
Well.
On next place paid.
We don't hold any drinking parties out there.
I'm just using that. You know what I'm saying, then.
Is, is any other questions or discussion?
What about capital projects, who would be responsible for those?
They would be, it's in the original lease capital improvement.
It's reading there at no cost to the county, right?
And, uh, also in here, I know it says, there was one place that says can be, building can be inspected, ins- inspected, but it, it doesn't really give a, a time, I think, to protect the county's interest in the building, I think it ought to mandate that it's inspected at least once a year, could be more, but I think it ought to be, uh, in order to be inspected at least once a year.
By?
By the county mayor, or.
Or the building.
Or the building committee or somebody.
You got that?
Is that part of the motion, the building to be inspected at least once a year?
You want that as part of.
Okay.
With a minimum of once a year. It could be as many times as it wants, I'm just trying, I mean, I'm not gonna always be there, this is my thirtieth year, I'm on my way outdoors, that's being there, uh, to protect the county's interest, I think. It should be, also, did that motion being available for community and social uses, did you add the wording at, at the fire department's discretion?
Nah, I didn't in my motion. Uh, but if it, if you, if we gave it to you as a, a ninety-nine year lease, then when you lease something, to me, that's like me going out and leasing property to farm.
What's kind of, we was coming back, we're leasing it from you, but you're telling me what I have to do with it in the lease.
You gotta have certain thing, but when you lease something, that you're.
I would hope, I would hope, and, and I think that the fire department would use good discretion about the community using. You know, I shouldn't be, I shouldn't be telling you guys how you're gonna need to use that.
We weren't the same as any other fire department, but up until now, we, we've been different than any other fire department, uh, uh, cause since this has come out the paper, some different firemen across the county have said, well, it ain't right, they pay your light bill, and they don't pay ours, and I said, well, we run a community center, do you run a community center out of your fire department, we have a county-owned community center, they're, they're paying our light bill. If you want to still maintain the community center, I don't think you should have the fire department pay the light bill for inside your, your building, uh. If we lease it off for the ninety-nine year, I think it should be our discretion.
And, and, and we're not gonna, I'm not gonna, I think that's what, should be left up to you guys, like you, they open their fire department for anything that the community wants. I mean, I, is it a community center, I don't guess you consider it a community center, but they still open their doors to help the community. And that's what fire departments are there for.
And, and we will too, but we want it to be at our discretion.
But thirty-nine in there inhibits them from charging a, a little cleaning fee.
Well, we, we have it been, because the county's always paid the light bill, but we may have to try, start that now, but in part of the lease over here, it says that we can't. Subleasing, so we let, uh, the community, uh, usually, is that considered?
That wouldn't be considered, cause you're not.
Okay, we're not subleasing, they're putting a, a store in there, nothing like that.
Is any other questions?
Which I think that'd be unfair, I mean, if you guys are charging a cleaning fee for using the facility, I don't see why you might have to call it that.
The motion that Charlie made, and, and that is. The motion that Charlie made, and that and that is, to get Mr. Phillips, he'll have to he'll have to draw this up, and then it will be referred to full county commission. That's what the motion is in a in sense, right?
Yeah, I go from Phillips to the fire department for their review and then.
Forget it, and then the county commission vote on it.
But that's just one, are you, are you gonna talk about anything else in the lease, or you're just, you're making that motion to change that part now?
Mm-hmm.
Well, everything else.
Everything needs to be changed, it needs to be changed, when Mr. Phillips goes over, it needs to be like it's gonna be.
Well, in in the this part, it says, L C acknowledged that it examined the lease premises and accepts same as being in good order and repair. Uh L C, L C shall be responsible, assuming all costs repairs basis of the vehicle sit, the the building situated on purpose. Uh of course, the the building does need some repairs, so it it's not at all in good shape. We we have just, we stopped probably sometime before last summer, because we were getting to comments from the community that uh. Uh the commission was gonna put us out, so we didn't, we didn't spend any more money, and was was saving our money and that, and have actually worked with other departments that's willing to take us in if we vacate the building. Uh but that's just, we we don't have any issue with with making these repairs, but as far as the lease here, it says that it's in good order and repair. It's not in good order, and and it does need uh repair, not only uh cosmetic issues. But there's some things that insurance and liability insurance has has requested to be done to the building.
Well, I hadn't heard any comments about commission saying they were gonna, you know, kick you all out or anything to the fire department. I've not, I've never heard that.
Probably not good to hear.
Community, uh but, you know, if this, as amended passes. Then it would be up to the fire department to make these adjustments on the bit, or or improvements on the building, that that needs to be done.
Uh also, insurance, county insurance had submitted a list of things that they would do to the building. If this ninety nine year lease goes through and our insurance acquires the building, do we go about what our insurance tells us, do we go about what your insurance tells us?
Our insurance no longer be in effect, will it?
It'd be your insurance.
As long as we're not paying them.
Okay.
Ninety nine years.
I did, I.
I'm not gonna be worried about it, Stacy and I.
Well, we'll be either. I guess what I'm saying is, we're gonna, we pay over seven thousand dollars here in insurance, so if my insurance inspects the building and and they're good with it. And then am I still gonna get visits from the county insurance coming up there and saying, no, you need to do this, you need to do that?
We're not gonna have insurance on them, right?
If you, if you're gonna take the sole thing and do fire and liability, you know, then it's your company that's gonna take place. We're gonna just take it completely off of our insurance.
All right.
When this, when this agreement is signed and is formal, then we will take it off.
Very please.
Okay.
But you will need to give us a certificate of uh.
Okay, that that we have, I meant to bring that to Doug, actually, and Ryan forgot it. Uh even though you you made the motion to make it a a ninety nine year lease, and then made these changes, it still says this agreement may be terminated. By the lease order with a six month notice given to L C. Uh so that in, that says within, even though it's a ninety nine year lease, within six months notice, you can still put the fire department out of the building?
I think that that would be if, say, the building committee, for example, or the mayor, whoever it may be, went to that fire department building. And they saw a lot of things that were wrong, or things that were going on that shouldn't be going on, uh they wasn't, say they didn't, got behind it a light bill, wasn't gonna pay it or whatever. Are a lot of problems at the fire department, I guess, you know, it stems from a lot.
Can we add then, this agreement may be terminated by the lease or the six month notice with cause or for cause? That way you just can't do it for no reason?
Yeah, I mean, I wouldn't do it for, you know, for.
So can can we, can we make that say, uh.
And they wanna change it to lessy or lessor, you know, so you guys.
Either or, you don't gotta one.
Yeah, well, none, none.
It's just staying in verbiage, yeah.
Could, could uh. I think what needs to happen is, is key, since you was on getting this agreement, would would you be willing to sit down? Uh Sarah and and Stacy and work these details out before Mr. Phillips?
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Work all these details out, and then that way we're not going back and saying, well, this should have been in there, or that should have been in there. Well, we're all parties get together and work this out.
We made some notes, so we'll just, we'll just uh review the following, I've got the committee here to make, so, but we'll know what the the committee wants to do on this. But down here on the bottom, when we said that it to be inspected at the minimum of once a year, it also says the lease order is represented, may enter the leased property at any time reasonable. Uh convenient with L C for the purpose of inspection for the safety and preservation of the property. Uh we don't have any problem with with y'all coming up at any time and looking at the building, uh or giving you the the code, but when you say reasonable, who determines what's reasonable? The last time it was inspected, I was notified like right then, and like I said, I was uh had it in a, in a training class in Johnson City. So there was no way that I could be there to let anybody in it, and not only that, but I was asked by the county mayor's office to give the code to our office doors. Uh so they could get in our offices without us there. I don't have a problem with anybody getting in our offices if we're there, but that's where our medical files or personnel records, uh things like that are are stored. So I I have to keep that behind lock and key, so I didn't, I didn't give the code as far as trying to be difficult to work with, I I give the code to to follow, I didn't give the code to follow the law. So if somebody wants in those areas, all you're gonna do is get with me or 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 one of the the team members from there, we'll let you, we'll let you in there. We'll put you, we'll put you in the attic, we'll put you anywhere you wanna go, but it's kinda hard to show up at the building and send me a text, want to inspect the building right then. I'm I'm just like everyone of y'all sitting there, I have a pretty busy schedule too. Uh so how is that gonna be determined, what are we gonna do on reasonable? Or are we gonna change that wording to it will be uh inspected by the county a minimum of once a year, to be determined by the mayor or public buildings committee?
And you already recommended that they get together and talk, cause this is getting a little, and that next week can be complicated, I understand your concerns and.
I just think that some of this is just standard verbiage. I'm gonna, I wish we, if we'd have been, we, we weren't notified, we were just notified that the county's putting the lease together, and we're gonna take it, and that's what, but you know, and so. If somebody would have contacted me, we could have sat down and done this prior to this meeting. But we're just, we're we're really worried about spending our money on a building that could be.
You're okay as long as that ninety nine lease, year lease is.
As long as we have.
And I'm I'm okay, and I I'm assuming the rest of this committee, my concern is, as long as we have the right to vote there. And it's at no cost to the county, I I have no problem with whatever.
I feel the same way, because if the community don't get to use it, they're gonna be more upset at you and not us, because we say it's up to you.
So I mean, that's just, that's where I stand, I mean, that's the way that I feel.
Well, we're gonna let them use it, but they're gonna, it, there may be a a committee picked by people in the community to help oversee that building, because.
That'd be left up to you.
Uh we we kept it open, because we, you all have taken the light bill, so it's your all's building, so we, but they they can use it, but they, it may start incurring costs to the people that do it.
As far as the light bill goes, Stacy, I don't, I I understand what you're saying, but in this original lease, it was there, black and white, that the fire department was to pay the light bill.
Well, but it was also in that original lease agreement that the county was to pay all the upkeep and the maintenance on the other part of the building too, from from what I.
Well, I think it was the the election commission waived that original lease rate.
Mr. Phillips, you got a motion, second.
Yes.
Question, question.
All right, all favor.
Uh let's do a roll call vote on that, sir.
Rick Brewer?
Yes.
Keith Gibson?
Yes.
Valerie Goins? Sorry, sorry. Raymond Jesse?
Yes.
John Metz?
Yes.
And Charlie Tucker?
Yes, thank you.
Now, I wanna add one, one more thing about the lease. Do we need to have this meeting with Stacy and us and get this done and bring it back before this, but.
I don't think it needs to be brought back before this committee, it just needs to come for full commission, that was the motion that it be sent for full commission.
Straight up.
It needs to go to the attorney.
Go, go to the attorney, you want the attorney, okay.
Once everything, you guys make sure it's like you want, and it'll go for a full commission.
Okay.
Did we get a second on that?
Yeah.
I think we did, I missed that, I'm sorry.
Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, one more item, uh is everybody through now on that?
Before we, before we move on, there were some questions about the bathroom up there last time, there was some misconceptions, does anybody have any questions for me as far as how that took place or how that went? Cause I heard a commissioner make a comment that your six thousand dollars thrown out there, that they don't know where it went. So is there any questions for me as far as as how that came about?
I'm just gonna leave it like it is, Stacy, I have no, I just think we need to leave it, where's that?
Well, I I don't think we do, cause it kinda gives a perception, the fire department took six thousand dollars and didn't, and didn't do anything, and that's not at all how that was, that was how that came about.
According, I don't think that's a problem, Stacy, I think what it is, we we did look at you, uh the ones that were up there.
I'm not gonna.
And we saw where the bathrooms are gonna be, uh we were just wondering if it was, you know, if you had any left, and was that, was the six thousand a spin or whatever? You know, just questioning about that, it wasn't, to my knowledge, it wasn't anything.
Stacy, I'm a carpenter, and I went up there and looked, and I know what materials goes where, okay, and that's all I'm gonna say about it.
Well, I'm not a carpenter, and all I do is is uh is hire people, I don't know the first thing about buildings.
With this ninety nine year lease, let's get this by, let's just, and just move on with it, as far as I'm concerned, just move on. Now, if anybody else will discuss it, we will, but you know, I'm I'm, I have no problems leaving it, where's that?
Well, I don't know, I kinda get the feeling that you're giving the implication that we did something wrong.
If you won't be commenting on it, I will, but I I'd rather just.
Well, absolutely I do, I'm not trying to hide nothing.
But I I I can't blame Mr. Vaughn for.
Okay.
Failing the way he feels, cause he.
Well, this is the situation, Stacy, and I don't know, I'm not saying there's anything wrong done, but I know that on that six thousand dollars that the county spent money on for a bathroom. All of it didn't go on that bathroom, according to what was.
Every bit of it did, if if you look, and there's questions on anything that we can't locate or find, we'll be more than happy to send you some money back, but. I I got with the mayor's office, I got all the invoices, and if you come out there and find anything in that bathroom that's not on these invoices. I'll be more than happy to to reimburse you back. We had, it was two separate contractors and two s- two separate purchases. Uh so. I I I, by no means do I want it out there that you think we took the money and did something else with it.
I didn't, I didn't, I didn't say that, Stacy. But I know that what, what money was spent here, like, I think it was like twenty foot, two by eights, a number of them. Not all of them was used on that little bathroom part back there. You know, a lot, some.
We go up there and they're saying, if there's something up there.
I I, let's just do the ninety nine year lease and forget about it.
You're still giving the, you're still giving the perception that we've done something wrong. And so if that's the case, we would, I'm gonna come out there with you or somebody, and we'll go through this line item by line item on this invoice, and we'll locate everything.
It doesn't necessarily say that you've done something wrong, maybe it was invoiced wrong, okay? But I'm just saying, according to these invoices, it doesn't, everything doesn't check out according to these invoices uh for this money.
Can this conversation happen between you two, I don't, I I I'll have to say, Mr. Vaughn.
Let's move on, let's move on.
I don't wanna misconstrue that he does anything inappropriate.
I didn't say that.
I know, but it it may be construed that way.
Next item on the agenda is courthouse attic insulation, and I think we have a, Sarah has some information on that.
Uh yes, Mr. Chairman, we had uh four people to come to uh give us quotes on the attic insulation, actually, I only got three quotes back. Uh G and M insulation and Churchill was the lowest quote, I showed all the quotes to the mayor, the mayor uh selected G and M. To um do the job, they've been given a P O, they're to begin their work on April the seventeenth, and will be completed by four o'clock on April the eighteenth. They're to bring the R thirty insulation uh to the R thirty eight and and R thirty eight where there is no insulation in the attic.
And what was that cost again, sir?
Three thousand six hundred twenty one dollars.
That don't sound bad.
The quote next, next to that was four thousand six hundred fifty dollars.
Thank you.
And that's just the courthouse, right?
No, she's, she's already took care of it, we're just getting a net bait. If anything else come forth to me.
Uh there's a couple of things that I would like to just bring to your attention. There's some things that we're trying to do out of this year's budget, and of course, the insulation was not in our original budget, but we're gonna be able to do that insulation out of this fiscal year. Uh I have talked to the budget committee and this committee a couple of times about the condition of our 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 annex elevator. The controller needs to be replaced, and we continue to have more frequent um service calls. If we can get this insulation done, and we can find the money to replace that controller, I would like to do that out of this fiscal year. If not, we're gonna ask you and the budget committee to fund that out of this next year's budget. So I wanted to keep you informed on that, when we look at projects that we need to go forward with out of the next year's budget, when we have to fund a capital project. But this elevator is gonna have to be fixed before it goes out, we'll try to do it out of this fiscal year, but we may not be able to.
Was that about like twenty eight thousand dollars, if I remember?
Two years ago, it was a little over twenty nine thousand, so I have asked the man to give me a new quote, that was two years ago, so I'm sure the price has gone up, and and I have not heard back from him. He did email me this morning, but I, he's not got the quote yet. So it will be more, a little more than the twenty nine thousand.
You don't want to get that quote, bring it back for a meeting or next meeting?
It it's a maintenance issue, you know, and and if we've got the money, I would like to just go ahead and get it out of this year's money.
Anybody got anything to say on that? All right, anything else?
So on the, on the library project, when is your contractor going to be able to give us a quote?
Uh I can get him, probably give us a quote without the.
Concrete?
Without the uh.
Information she got on the uh.
Oh, yeah.
On the openers.
Okay, I've got the information on the openers, but and this is a co, this is a company that we've used.
But I, he couldn't get that uh control, all those controls, he just, he didn't work if anything else, cause he said he was having problems finding that, so.
Well, this, this is a project that we're working with, partnering with the city, they're anxious to get started, and that, and we need to try to do this project out of this year's money. That's another reason that I may not be able to do the elevator this year, if we have to pay for that.
We need to, we need to also get other, see if you can get that guy to get back with you at Lakeway Door, and anybody else, I mean, I think we need to get three or four quotes, we don't just need to get one or two.
Our our normal procedure, if we're gonna get quotes, is that we're going to, we we usually try to get three.
Yes.
Um what what would be the good thing if we could do that, is just get a turnkey job, except for the access control, because we are, even with this, we're gonna have to have a little bit of electrical work done to put in the headers. But I'm hoping that my maintenance people can do that, there's that possibility, so if we could do the turnkey, do the construction work. So, if we could do the turnkey, do the construction work as well as the concrete work, and then we've got one person doing everything and get done and over with.
Sarah probably needs to get ahold of that lightway door again, 'cause they may not have got back with you because of the control thing. So, all right, anything else?
Move to adjourn.
Say. Most of the day to say. I guess we'll stand adjourned.